All right, then let's stand.
United States. The Republican stands.
Well, that's all. Contendence. Your role of well, wait.
President.
Yeah.
Vice President.
Here.
President.
Here.
Secretary Thomas.
I choose.
And trustee ever.
Here.
Trustee Gaten.
Here.
And.
Present.
Okay. Next, I'm going to read the conservation ethic. Oh, number six. Foster a conservation ethic among McKinney County citizens, helping all of us, regardless of the basis for our interest in nature. Develop a greater awareness of our role and our responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume the moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. And then go to Chris.
Go to to acquire and maintain other wildlife scenic areas and open spaces for conservation purposes for educational and recreational use.
And then. Have it moving conservation storage.
We pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, way of life in McKinney County. A quality of life in Henry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully developed cities and towns, and strong economy and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number three?
Yes.
Number three, we will remain steadfast in our commitment to protect district natural heritage.
Thank you. Okay, now Linda is absent, and so we need Secretary pro temp. And I've asked Ray to volunteer, and he has accepted, so I think we have this vote on. Asking Ray to require any.
Do we need a motion?
What do you think, John?
Yeah.
I'll move second.
In the last seconds.
I'm sorry, who was the first?
I was.
Okay, thank you. Right, trustee ever.
Yes.
Vice President.
Yes.
Trustee Durman.
Yes.
President.
Yes.
Trustee Gaten.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, and six point oh is adopting the agenda. So does anyone have any comments about the agenda? We should kind of roll call.
I make more than that, then as.
Second.
Thank you.
Vice President.
Yes.
Trustee ever.
Yes.
President.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Hammerman.
Yes.
And trustee Gaten.
Yes.
And seven point oh is trustee reports. I've been in a discussion with all of you, and it's sort of an extension of the budget review. And we're going to focus in. When we get to nine point oh, two other questions that Andy has asked us to answer. But beyond that, I don't have anything specific to report. Does anyone else have any activities? That they'd like to? Okay. I've traded emails with Kelly, who is under the weather, but I think is connected to us through Zoom. And I I thanks, Kelly. I asked her.
Is that Kelly, Kelly there?
I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
Perfect. I I asked Kelly if she would comment on some of these budgetary issues with respect to the county on the revenue side of detail and on the expenditure side wage issue. The budget is is not complete, but she can perhaps give us insight into how they're progressing.
Would you like me to talk about now with my report or later? I'm sorry.
Right now would be fine, Kelly.
Okay. Okay, so first I'll tell you quick what has been going on in the county. So we had a presentation at our committee, the whole meeting. I'm sorry. All right, we had a presentation in our committee, the whole meeting that in it was an outlook of the fiscal year of 2023 with projections of revenue expenses. So I will get to that in just a second, but it was a very thorough with PowerPoint and just a lot of information about what's going on in the economy. So if anybody would like that, I could get it from Kevin Bussow and forward that to you. It had a lot of really good information. And then this past last week, we passed two proclamations. One was Women's Equality Day. It was August 26th. And then August 2023 was Free and is Free and Charitable Clinic Month. We reappointed Dave Stone as the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals and then appointed two alternates. And then we approved a resolution to purchase a new software program that the assessor's office will use, and that will be able to look at homestead exemptions and other exemptions and see who has taken them in our county and who takes them in other counties and and hopefully cut fraud in the household. And so it sounds like it's going to be well worth its money, and this will take take away some of the manual work that the assessor's office has to do. And then we also did pass a resolution designed to design the memory care unit in Valley High. And I know they've been talking about that for a couple of years, so that's a big step at Valley High. So when it comes to the financial presentation Kevin Bussow gave, we, if you look at the increased wages that we will be giving union and non-union employees, and then you look at CPI and how much our goods have increased and services and everything have increased. For example, licenses, so just a license on a piece of software is going up forty eight or forty percent. So all of this is really impacting our expenses, and we estimate our expenses are going to be 20 million more than they were in the previous year. We also do estimate that we will be getting some more revenue, additional revenue, whether that's coming from fees or taxes. And not necessarily, we're not talking about the levy yet, but we, so we'll be able to offset a little bit. So what we will do, because right now we're in the process of reviewing the budgets department by department. The departments come to their liaison committee and present their depart, present their budget. And when they present their budget, they do it without employees or without employment costs. That way they can look and see where they're going to be. And then at the bottom, they put in employment costs too. So if anything is additional, whether they need some new software, whether they need a new employee, that is put separate, so we can see what is additional going into the next year. Then, once all those reports are given to the departments, it heads on over to the whole board. And September 29th, I think it's that day, in the morning, we will have a special committee, the whole meeting. And this is going to have all of the budgets put together. And Kevin Bussow is going to give a report. We started doing this just two or three years ago, because most times people were just given the budget and they, it was such a big document that they didn't even know what questions to ask. And so then what we're going to do in order to figure out which or how we're going to vote, if we're going to vote with just the budget status as status quo, if we're going to have budget with new growth, or if we're going to have the budget with new growth and CPI, they are going to present us with those three options showing us what we will be getting or losing, whatever, whichever one we pick. Because what happened last year is that they created the budget on the assumption that everybody would vote to take CPI and new growth, and it failed miserably right in the middle of our county board meeting. So they had to come up with a quick plan to figure out what to do, and they voted to just take new growth. And the accounting staff and the administration staff were asked, can we do this? And they said, we'll make it work, which doesn't really give us much information on how they're going to make it work. So as board members, we should really know what we will be getting or losing depending on which budget we will choose. And if anybody is interested in attending, you know, it's, they're all open budgets or open meetings, it's September 29th at the administration building. And if anybody has any questions, how this process works or anything, feel free to reach out to me at any time.
Well, thanks, Kelly. And if you can send that economic information that you found interesting regarding McKinney County at this point in time, if you could send that to John or Elizabeth or Christie, then they can disseminate it to those of us on the board. And I appreciate, I think we all appreciate insight into where you all are in the budget process, and we are similarly trying to come to some decisions so that Andy Dalek, our finance director, can put our tentative budget together in September. So do any of the trustees have a question for Kelly?
Kelly, any, any discussion on specific recommendations for wages? I mean, I understand it's going to go through a meeting and all that, but is there any kind of consensus developed or discussion?
It's too early right now, because we really don't, haven't seen all the budgets even come through the department or through the committees. So we will really be put in a position, I'm sure, to either cut services or increase the levy a bit.
Well, thank you. I think that's been a help to us, and we may be leaving, and you may be following.
Welcome. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Oh, real quick, Kelly, you said that meeting was August 29th. You know what time, what time that is?
Actually, I think it's September 29th. Let me. Yeah, it's at nine o'clock on the 29th.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's great. We've had our county board liaison, and we've had trustee reports, now it's president's report, and I would like to take this opportunity to go back to the working group that we put together in a meeting at Lost Valley and then our follow-up last week in the cow and discuss the issues of the next budget year, the 24 budget. And I think I may have overreached in that I tried to do this informally by speaking with each of the trustees one-on-one and trying to sense if there was a consensus on on the issues. And perhaps a better approach is the approach we're going to take this evening is to discuss this in an open forum. I will say that some issues were united in the proposal that Andy gave us. There were issues that we all agreed on. And let me just get those out of the way. And then we will focus in on the two issues where there was a range of things. Those being the PTL levy and the employee wage cost increase. The ones, the issues upon which there was general agreement was to approve the amount personnel cost increase of seven percent to approve the capital spending request of 560,000 plus the carryover from last year and to approve the reserve spending of 772,000. Does anybody feel differently about that or wish to speak up about those points? Okay, then let's let's go to the PTL levy. And there was feeling that we should take a PTL levy. There was some disagreement as to how much of the levy we should take. Big Andy, you had said that our maximum PTL increase under the rules that we operate were then approximately 5.8% and that amounts to $482,000. So some of us felt that that was appropriate, and we could live with that. In part because we have the option of abating the levy further down the road. And by taking the full levy, it increases our tax capacity going forward. And whether we use it or not, this fiscal year, having that capacity increase can be helpful at some point in the future. So rather than run on, I'd like to hear what other members, other justices have to say about the levy.
All right, so if I understand, if I understand you're right, if we took the full PTL, yes, it's 400 and some thousand more.
Correct.
Yes. Almost five. They haven't taken that for how many years?
How many years has it?
Well, if you go back 10 years, it'd be 11 years, before time 11 years, if you took the PTL increase.
In general, when we take it, do we take the whole thing we're entitled to, or have we sort of taken a partial levy, if you will?
We've taken a full one in 15 and 16, and we took a partial in 19. And one that I think was also partial, we've gone back to the lower of two years, and the board's decided to go about a third of the lobby increase.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Plus, the new growth that's on there too.
Right.
That might probably be more this year, huh?
Not a lot. It doesn't have a huge impact because of new growth in generals. Nothing like it was, you know, a decade ago, right? So in in the budget information that I show you, the difference of new growth growing by 30% is a difference of $4,000 or $5,000 revenue. New growth isn't, it grew like 30%, I thought it grew by 15 or 20, but even if it went 30, it's less than $10,000 in additional revenue for the district. It just doesn't have a lot for tax revenue. So in that 482,000, 69,000 of it is the new development money. That's probably a little higher than actually, it'd probably be close to 60, but I always kind of round that one up a little bit.
Well, I don't know. I really don't see a problem with taking that.
Any other comments on the question of the levy?
Uh, I do. I I think I propose somewhere in like the 3% range, and I'm just concerned about the county and the community when assessments come out and everyone gets sticker shock. And then on top of that, you know, there's going to be, you know, inflation out of their pocketbooks. And I mean, I know that you know, the percent, the, what the district takes out of of everybody's you know, for tax money is low. You know, I know it's $70 a household or whatever comes out being something like that. And I know too, from being on the purchaser board, which was a lot more than that, you know, up in the five, three, five, $600 range, but fingers still get pointed all the time when you take the full amount, and I know that. And I just don't, I just don't think that's right with the way the economy is right now. The way it's headed, we don't know where it's going. And I'm just thinking of the community. I think that the district does very well with the tax money that it has now, the revenue that gets from foreign, some of the small programs, I think it's run very well. I think it continues to be run as long as we're modest with what we're going to take with the details. So I'm actually not for taking the full amount.
Does the fact that we have the potential to abate whatever we take at a future date, which I think Andy is January, February, does that would that influence you to consider taking the full levy at this point in time? With the idea that we'll be having this discussion on the issue of an abatement? And that will also occur in the context that the working group dealing on this future revenue question involving a referendum will have reported back to us and given us a little better idea going forward how reliant we're going to be on the PTL versus this referendum additional source of income. So I guess I'm.
No, it's.
Okay. No, if I could, I I agree with Sean. I think, you know, when we get to the point of talking about, you know, the loan is done, we've got new numbers to look at, that we're going to ask for more with this referendum, or we pop a light, wherever, however we get there. I think we have a much better story if we say, look, we didn't take everything we could have last night. We're managing frugally, fiscally. We didn't take it all. I think we get some points for that, whether we do referendum or anything else. I think it's just, just good PR sets the right tone and, you know, something less than full is better than taking it all.
Okay.
Andy?
Just at the point of clarification, when you do the abatement, it's a permanent reduction. So there's no difference today, and I'm not suggesting one or the other. But if you say you approved a 5% levy increase tonight, and we want a levy for it September, and that was approved. If in December or January, you said, you know what, we're not going to take the whole thing, abate 2% is permanent. But that levy is a 3% increase. You can't go back and re-capture it.
Okay.
That's what we'd be going for.
All right, so whether we cut it back now or cut it back in January, it still gets cut back. I would say the false impression, which is my fault, that if we took it and then abated it, we sort of preserved the capacity.
Right, so the, the thing that you're familiar with, the process you're familiar with, you talked about abating the debt service levy, you block out the PTL, right? So if you abate the PTL, it's permanent. If it's, if you do five in September, and you abate two, it's three, that's the PTL permanent. If instead of abating the PTL, then back to the taxes, same. So then that, you know, the, if we, you really need like a PowerPoint presentation that kind of truly remembered. But let's say you did a 5% PTL levy increase tonight, right? The debt service levy is going to increase on its own. We don't need to worry about services of reference bonds. If you abated 2% of the debt service levy equivalent to that of the PTL, the matter of fact will be the same as if you raised it PTL just 3%. The positive is, in the next year, you would carry that whole PTL capacity forward, even though you didn't use it all, because you abated some of it with the debt service issue, you would maintain that PTL capacity. If you want, I can.
Well, that is, that is a strategy, even allow.
Right, it's true. I would like to see a projected one, if you could carry that out, so we could look at that. Because that's going to tell us a lot of things, even like the referendum, if we needed. We had that PTL money, and we lied on that versus going out for the others. Might help on that, but that's a whole different subject.
All right, well, okay. I'll proceed. So this is, this is, this is a consensus that we're trying to achieve. This isn't a vote. We will vote on the budget, but we're giving Andy instructions as to how to prepare the budget. So
so one quick thing, I can clarify my mind then. So with PTL, if we said, okay, we want to only do about 3%, does that carry on then next year, then we can only do up to 3%? Well, you set the new base, right? So the PTL for 11, for 22, grow by 3%. When you go to 23, you would start with a new 22 plus 3%. So that 2.8% you gave up, we can't get that back, right? You can't then go, oh, we lose that 3, let us get the other 2.8 in the next year.
Start, start.
Right. So if you grow this to 22 by 3%, that's your new aggregate total that would carry you to the next year. It would then grow under PTL in 23. And it's obviously a lower out, because you didn't take 5, 8, or 3, or whatever that number is. You know, when I was on the Greenwood County Board, we made that mistake, and we regretted it for several years because we got it way back. And then it just sort of stifled us for the next several years.
And that's why I'm suggesting something close to it, 4.75. Something that just says, look, we're being good stewards, we're not taking everything that we have available to us. We're managing fiscally, yet we still secure funds and don't harm ourselves in future.
Andy, you correct me if I'm wrong. The 482,000 dollar increase was a 5.8% increase.
Correct.
So we've had numbers, alternates proposed of 4.75. And what, Sean, I've forgotten what you're all.
Three and a half.
Three and a half. Okay, so.
I was basing my 4.75. I thought it was five. My, my, I took quick, quick notes.
5.8.
Yeah, almost six, so, you know, I bought. You're, I, show me a long way from, I'm just saying, get as close to that number as we can without taking it all. That's what we should land.
This number, to me, seems too low. If 5.8 is too high, I agree with trying to get closer to 5.8.
By five.
Around number five. It isn't necessary that we have a consensus. I mean, basically, a majority will carry the day. Andy?
So to clarify, you know, we're just trying to give direction to staff on the budget. They were, even the county's budget here this year starts September. Ours is April, it's six months out from that. We want to get information back to staff, so they can start billing the budget and get that first stuff. But we have to approve the lobby by the September 30th. So next month, the board has to approve the lobby under the transportation agreement. So, you know, what you get for consensus tonight, that's what we'll prepare and bring back to you as an ordinance to approve that lobby next month.
Well, I mean, I think decisions need to be made, and, and I had the chance to trade messages with Linda Thomas. I think she would be on board with a lower levy in this range of 5%. I think that would be okay with the budget. So Sean, you're pretty firm where you.
I am, yeah.
You are.
Okay. All right. I mean, you're just doing some simple math. I mean, even a 4.6 is still 80%. And that's still high. 80% of of that is still pretty high. I mean, 8% is pretty strong to say that you're still going to take that.
All right. You know, I may be driving the bus, but I this is a shared.
It's a winding road.
But I guess I'm going to ask for a show of hands.
Well, make a vote.
Well, make a motion, yeah.
I'll, I'll make the motion that.
Oh, we can, all right.
This is just a consensus. And, you know, it's. So a show of hands, we could do a show of hands. Straw pool. All right. And, well. How many people want three point?
What was the number?
Five.
Three point five. Okay, um, it's gonna be different than three point five. Okay. Uh, how many, uh, people would go with five? Okay, so, um, Ken, there's your recommendation.
We can always abate.
Can we always abate?
Still that, but we still got this. No, we're starting over.
Right, and it's less than we were entitled to, so. Um, you know, we have something to defend. Okay, thank you very much, and I appreciate everyone's help. So now we come to the wage issue, um. And, um. We, we were offered options of five, six, or seven percent, um. And, uh, there was, um. No one wanted seven. Six was, had some supporters, uh, you know, were folks who were under six. There's this wage study that we've approved. And it's possible that that will be back before the budget is. The final budget is approved, if I correct about that.
John.
Possibly.
Possibly, okay. And, and the betting is that the wage study is gonna. Of course, wages up. I'm smiling, but I have a hunch that it's gonna be Andy mission to raise the wage. Okay, so, um. Any discussion on this five, six, seven percent wage increase? Those options are a different option.
Guess I'll start again, right? Um. I, I kinda thought about this a lot. Is government, you're a HR now. Is government rules different than the public sector as far as?
I mean, the private sector.
Private sector, right, right. Versus, as example like downtime and, and, uh. You know, uh, job classes like grades, is that, is that, is that in public or private?
It, it almost always, we're visiting.
Union, so it's union?
Mainly union, but a lot of places that are non-union mirror the union to avoid one. So I can tell you, you know, after my plans for non-union, but we follow seniority, we follow classifications, job postings, all of those things. So I, I think the answer, yes, you would find it in a majority of, of private businesses. Large, large.
I might be stepping out of bounds, right? So probably both of my kids work, and I think they got good jobs and. That's good. So I guess they, they're, they don't bother you and stuff, whatever, you know, it's ours, this. But I'm just, just talking about that. I think seven's too much. Um, that's my opinion. I think we better blip. You know, this, uh, inflation is a blip. But, um, I think seven's too high.
I, I actually, um, that's why I sent out that article, yeah, and Elizabeth passed it on. It said wages and salaries for private sector workers from five point seven in the second quarter from a year early, fastest pace on, on record back to two thousand one. So, you know, I think you're right, we're, we're, we're looking at a point where inflation has been the highest it's been in a long time. And wage rates have increased five percent or more each month this calendar year. For union contracts that are settled and for non-union locations that come up or whatever the fiscal years are. So I, that's why I recommend the five point seven. Um, and that's a one year, a lot of places budget their wages three years out. They can adjust in year two and three, year one is seven, but they took the, so when I first saw seven, six, five, I actually thought, oh, we're budgeting three years out. We should be at five percent, you know, of three years. Um, because inflation should be abated. But yeah, with five point seven, the number I landed on, because that was the number from the Fed's literally, you know, but this was dated. August tenth, and I think they said in the July report, they came out August first, so. You know, that's pretty recent data, but, but I understand you need more in that, more than that, because whatever the base rates are, you also have progression. So, so if the, if the wage rates go up. Four percent or five percent, there's, there's steps. So people get a general wage increase based on inflation. But then, people who are not at the top of the range work their way up and they, they may take and change it, it's different for different classifications, maybe take seven years to get to the top.
Just to clarify, for the, the progression of, um, it's very simple, it's twelve before seven, and basically. Because it takes seven years to move to the midpoint of your range. In the midpoint of the range, like most government entities, some try and be in a mirror to what the market advocates, right? Sort of the district program, if you've been at it, you're not in the same position for seven years, and you're not at the midpoint of your range, we will then bump you to the midpoint of your range on the revenue. After you hit the midpoint, there's no more automatic progression through our system. So as Elizabeth said many times, there is a lot of compression at the midpoint, you know, even if we're not moving people out of town involved. Um, the four-year mark just says, if you've been at your job for four years, we'll move you halfway to the midpoint for the first quartile, just so there's some progression up in the second year. There's a very minimal progression, but it, it resolves when the vigor which began many years ago, and that's where we had. Huge compression at the very first quartile wave, wave ranges. Very few people were moving out of them, and there was a select group of people that were just flying, you know, moving up toward the top of it. Um, so this took out any subjectivity, instead of the very least, everybody should be moving where the market ends.
And, and one of the things we can take a look at going forward, Elizabeth and I talked about this early on, was. We can take a look at, as contracts come up and in the non-union areas. Taking, taking out the bottom, say, two runs and decrease two runs. Now you've got a higher rate to start people at, so you're more competitive. And you've got, and you've got room for people to, to grow within the range. So we can take a look at that as you go down the road. But, I guess the, the point I'm trying to make is, whatever number we, we say, you've gotta add to that. Which is why I was more for that five point seven, because that's gonna, yeah. And, and what I'm looking at is, I'm really looking at, uh, uh, in the Chicago market. Looking at lease contracts, but those are all, you know, it's always public, they're in the newspaper, Aurora just settled four, three and a half, three. Uh, you know, so there, you know, it's.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm seeing more the police and fire in that, so others, nurses are going up seven to nine percent, you know, so it's, it's kinda across the board. The police makes sense because we have a police department here, you know, we get some jobs and we get. So again, I think, you know, when, when you and I talked, though, I thought. You know, five point seven should be above the number, and I know you, you're, you're like.
I was massaging towards a, a round number, so I moved up to about the six and then. And graciously assented, I think, just because I'm older and whatever. And, uh, and then, but then the, the wake-up call was, uh, not the wake-up call, but the reality is that a six percent. Wage increase translates into a seven point three cost increase when, when these other things are, are factored in, so.
Yeah.
So, uh, so that's, and that's one of the reasons. That we're having this discussion amongst ourselves this evening, so, um. Starting over here, but I should, I should start over, go over here. Any input on the, the wage issue?
Sure, yeah. Um, I'm actually, it was closer to like four and a half, five. Um, so some of the reason behind. You know, my viewpoint on it is, well, first off, I am a federal employee, you know, and so currently the Biden administration is saying that. Federal employees may receive a four point six percent. Uh, increase in the scales in January. Um, I've also been an employee of local government too. You know, and, um, I want local governments or federal government to be competitive in the marketplace in terms of salary, however. You know, also serving in these roles too, you, you also have an understanding as an employee. Where your wages come from taxpayer dollars, that. If I was to take my position and go to another company, I know I would get paid more, completely understand that, but. There's a lot of security in working for the government, and you trade that off, or you trade off maybe a bigger salary for some of the benefits. Of working for the security of the government, so. Um, looking at inflation, currently it's somewhere around like eight and a half percent. Um, you know, that was something that I thought, well, we don't need to be, you know, that high up. Uh, lastly was without a current. Without a, 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 a current study on our, uh, the employees of the district and seeing what their act terms of pay. It's kind of hard to also make that decision. I'd really love to have that in place. And the other thing too, once that is done, it's not saying that the board can't make decisions on positions. To make those increases at another point in time too, so. I feel like taking the entire apple right now of maybe a knee-jerk reaction of inflation. And, uh, you know, we're gonna obviously get a little bit more taxpayer money. I just don't wanna kinda knee-jerk and just say, all right, yeah, everyone's underpaid, let's just go to this level, because we're gonna have. This increase, you know, a wage increase, but also employees are gonna have their normal annual increases, you know, and so. I feel it's a better choice to be a little conservative on that number. Because when that study comes back, we'll have the opportunity to make it right at that point as well.
Well, I think when I was educating the five point seven, I didn't realize the, you know, that the progression on top of that, so. You know, I was, I was thinking that was the total cost, so. I actually agree, I think we need to factor it down to maybe five, and then he adds on and you still get the, what would you get this?
It's one point three is about the addition, but it doesn't matter what the wage increase that, that cost. On the four seven and a few other anomalies, it's one point three percent.
One point three.
He was adding on the five, he gets six point three. Cost of it is.
Yeah, so four point seven, you get a six. And that's close to the, you know, the federal bill. But I do, you may have that study to look at, but I, I think if we, if we're gonna recalibrate it all. Four, seven, plus the one, three, might be the, the way to go.
Yeah, I, I agree. I thought the, I thought the numbers you gave us were total, um. But, um, if we're adding on that one point three, I, I, I'd look forward, I think, four point seven, you guys just think this. Would, would be where I would be at.
Look, I see a consensus coming, um, anyone?
I have one question. So the, the wage study that they're gonna do, is that? Government wage study or is that?
Market.
It's market analysis.
Yeah, they'll typically look at just public sector employees within our basic area, within our basic size. The last one we did in eighteen was all park districts, um, within the thirty mile radius, with the exception, we added a pre-port position, so. Their positions be weak, uh, to the natural resource department that the park districts just saw have. But other than that, it was park districts that were shown to be a similar budget size, um, and affordability kind of task.
Okay, so major player, major employers in Rockford, pretty much went four percent as a budget for wage increases for salving employees. But it's not peanut butter like, like we do it here, when, when you have, there's merit. So, you know, real good performers, six, six, six and a half percent. For performers got two and a half to three, and then, then we also do the middle.
The budget plus that with Rockford too, a little bit different region compared to you. Some of the classes, so.
Well, this has been a great discussion, and I appreciate everyone's open, um. Comments and, um. Well, voices were raised and, that's great, that's great.
Have we thrown anything?
Yeah.
Not yet, at least. So, okay, uh, consensus four point seven, which translates overall employee costs into. Around six. And then we've done the PTO issue, and I think we've accepted, um, the other, um. Capital reserve and unemployed costs of seven percent. So Andy, have we given you what you need? Okay, perfect. I appreciate everyone's patience and cooperation. Good. I refer to my cheat sheet now, and we're coming up to the consent agenda.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, okay. Um, do we have any public? Just come in.
No, there's no hands raised.
Thank you. Well, I think he's here for the vote on the Fox River Door, sir. I think you're here just to see how we do with it.
Well, yeah, as a, as a landlord or just self of the property that we're talking about, I sure would appreciate it getting some work done on it.
All right.
And so, uh, I, I did mention the other day that I contacted the Army Corps of Engineers, Ivy and R. And Waterway Agency, and I thought all four outfits would have to work together. And I was told that everything has to be initiated by Conservation District first, and then what they do, the other people join in and ask. But it has to be your initiation.
Thank you, thank you. When I, when I retired, my second son asked me, Dad, what are you gonna do in retirement? So I see what you do in retirement, you, you're stirring up the vibe here. All right, all right, so now the consent agenda. So I think, um, the Secretary Pro Ten is gonna take these things one at a time, um, starting with eleven point one. And you move, you move to. Where you're more.
I move to. Uh, except, uh, eleven point one approval of minutes of previous meetings. Eleven point one A, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, coming before. Eleven point one B, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting. Eleven point one C, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting amendment. Eleven point two, acceptance of the Treasury Report. Eleven point two A, acceptance of the Treasury Report for July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Eleven point two B, acceptance of the Quarter One Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Three Barings Report. Eleven point three, Resolution Number twenty-two dash six zero, authorizing designation. Uh, depositories, or funds, or other public monies in the custody of McHenry County Conservation with three. Eleven point four, Resolution Number twenty-two dash six one. Authorizing payment to McHenry County Collector and McHenry County Treasurer for the twenty twenty-one second installment of property taxes. Eleven point five, authorization to prepare and seek RFPs from consultants slash firms for class, for a classification and compensation study. Eleven point six, authorization to prepare specifications and seek RFPs. Shouldn't say RFPs, for professional financial audit services for fiscal years twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Eleven point seven, Resolution Number twenty-two dash six two. Approving sale of thirty-seven feet of stream credits to the Village of Plainfield. For the one hundred and forty-third street extension project. Eleven point eight, bid award fuel slash propane. Eleven point eight A, Resolution Number twenty-two dash six three. Awarding a contract to Blue Petroleum of Mondeleine, Illinois for unleaded and fuel fuels. For a period of one year, September first, twenty twenty-two, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Eleven point eight B, Resolution Number twenty-two dash six four. Awarding contract to AmeriGas of Ernie, Illinois for propane fuel. For a period of one year, September first, twenty twenty-two, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Authorization to prepare specifications and let bits for native seed or standard mixes. Eleven point one zero, Resolution Number twenty-two dash six five. Authorizing the Executive Director to execute a professional services agreement. For the Prairie Trail Steam Erosion and Trail Stabilization Construction Engineering Services. Eleven point one one, Resolution. Eleven point one one, Resolution Number twenty-two dash six six, authorizing the inclusion of the Fox Bluff Conservation Area and Hickory Grove Riverfront as access sites to the fabulous Fox Water Trail. Eleven point one two, Resolution Number twenty-two dash six seven, authorizing the execution of an IGA with the Village of Lake of the Hills for the creek meander improvements along the prairie trails. Eleven point one three, Resolution Number twenty-two dash six eight, authorizing execution of an irrevocable license agreement with commad pertaining to electrical lines along Keystone Road at Glacial Park Conservation. Eleven point one four, Resolution Number twenty-two dash six nine, authorizing a partnership with the McHenry County Conservation Foundation on the Commonwealth Edison Green Grant for the Bogart Bob Conservation. Eleven point one five, Resolution Number twenty-two dash seven zero, authorizing the Executive Director to send a letter of intent to the McHenry County Division of Transportation, establishing the district as a non-financial co-sponsor of the Bold Valley Road Multi-Use Path Project. Eleven point one six, authorization to prepare specifications and let bids for the Prairie Trail South Fire Drive stream erosion and trail stabilization project. Eleven point one seven, authorization for the Executive Direct- Director or her designated to award and execute an energy bid contract on day of bid led for an electric service at fifteen district locations for one year and to bring back to the Board of Trustees for ratification at the next scheduled regular meeting.
Second. Under the role, please.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Vice President Adam?
Yes.
President Brits?
Yes.
President Nico?
Yes.
Trustee Norman?
Yes.
And Trustee Gayton?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Well, twelve point O is under board business. So, um, I think the Treasurer Brits is going to take over at this point.
Okay, um, motion to approve the bill table for the month of July twenty twenty two.
Second.
Uh, twelve point one.
Do we do these individually, I think? So call the roll, please.
Uh, Vice President Adam?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
President Brits?
Yes.
Trustee Gayton?
Yeah.
President Nico?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Treasurer's internal audit. Is there any?
Last second. Needs a second. In discussion on the audit.
Listen, we're pulling. Okay, uh, twelve, twelve point one B, consideration for motion to approve the payment for balance of bills as indicated on submission of bills pending report for the month ending July thirty first, twenty twenty two. Second.
Um, roll call, please.
Trustee Gayton?
Yes.
President Brits?
Yes.
Trustee Norman?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Vice President Adam?
Yes.
President Nico?
Yes.
I think that's the treasurer's department. But now we have a motion, uh, redating the, um, Lions Prairie and Marsh Conservation Area. So who would like to make that motion?
This is to move forward with that feasibility study that we presented at the committee of the whole.
Yes.
To make a motion to move forward with the Lions Prairie and Marsh Conservation Area feasibility study.
Okay.
Second.
Do we need to read the entire text or is that sufficient?
Um, you can read a portion of it.
How about just that first, uh, stands, uh, first sentence?
Yeah, considerate, some motion about Resolutions twenty-two, seven, one. Resolution awarding professional services agreement on feasibility study from Lions Prairie and Marsh Conservation Area.
Second. Do we have a discussion? Do we have a a clock somewhere? Um, yeah, that's a match to accept thirty thousand, thirty.
Oh.
Any further discussion? If we can call the roll.
All right, President Brits?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Vice President Adam?
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Trustee Gayton?
Yes.
President Nico?
Yes.
Thank you so very much. The voters that are getting stuck stuck down there will appreciate it. Wait a minute. I saw one go any other day. He stopped real fast.
Well, I hope we all live long enough to see it.
Yeah, thank you so very much.
All right, so John?
Just a couple of quick items. Remember the September board meetings are early. Uh, the Committee of the Whole is on the twelfth, that's Monday, the twelfth. And the board meeting itself is on the fifteenth, and that's to accommodate the National Park and Recreation Association Conference. I don't know if anybody here is going, but I know Elizabeth is definitely going. Uh, one other item, you know, Elizabeth is on vacation. Uh, she has left me in charge for the next couple of days. Ed is in charge starting the twenty-fifth, uh, through Labor Day weekend, and then Wendy after that. But you just call any one of us. Any one of us will be able to respond and.
And we still take it again.
I'm sorry, um, uh, I'm I'm in charge until the twenty-fifth.
No, I'm sorry, uh, the next meeting.
The meetings, okay. Um, the Committee, Committee holds on the twelfth.
Yeah.
And the board meeting is on the fifteenth.
Thank you.
So it's Monday and the following Thursday. And then, uh, everybody knows to, uh, do that know before you go training, that cyber training. Um, so make sure you got that done. Some of those certificates are being turned in. I don't know that you need to print something and send it into us because I think once you do it, I think it automatically sends Stephanie a note.
I think so, but there was an email that said something.
Okay, well, if you can print something for me.
Or, but I did, did it work? I just, the certificate popped up, and then I just forwarded that by email.
Okay.
Perfect.
And, uh, those are, those are really the only, uh, the only other items that, uh, I just happened to look at, like Wiki While last week, and I mean, I noted several things, like seed collections are going on rampant right now. You've got uh, prairie trail projects that are moving, one that's in construction right now, and we've got several that are, you know, heading out to bid. Uh, hunting season preparation, things are being done out there for that. Uh, camps are done with, but we're gearing up for field turf seasons, uh, in in education. Uh, I just, it all, it's all sunny to fall. You know, fall is coming and you tell about the temps and whatnot. So, uh, I like fall. And I just noted all those things, like there's a lot going on and it's, uh, it's all due to fall coming. So that's all I got.
Question, there was an article in the Herald about, um, this McHenry is looking at their fifty, like fifty years of transportation or something. They talk about expanding bike routes or stuff. Is that going to tie in?
Yes, yeah. In, uh, just before you got on the board, um, there was an inclusion of a couple of year project that was about pedestrians and bicycles and whatnot, and it was done by the county. And they're feeding that into this new twenty fifty plan. So it's it's one of the first times they've actually joined the two, where they're actually recognizing cyclists, um, and 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 pedestrians as actual modes of transportation as it sounds. So some of those those e-bikes now, you know, they can go twenty-five miles an hour. You can get somewhere in a hurry. Well, anyway, um, yeah, it will be important.
I have a question for David or Ed. Where is that osprey nest that was featured in the photograph and said Glacial Park, but I I I've never seen that.
I think our our wildlife biologist would, uh, would prefer not to have that public meeting. Um, because we have had them in the past, nests that were disturbed by otter fur.
Oh.
We happen to have to have a situation on the site.
Thank you.
But they did successfully walk on it. So at least that's the first osprey ever hatched on a different site. And it's been a good success.
Oh, wow. And was that stand built specifically for to try to attract ospreys?
Um, we have a couple of them that on different sites that were placed there by Commonwealth Edison as part of their kind of green, uh, attempts to do that. So, yeah, it.
I've seen that in other parts of the country, wetlands and so forth, but I I didn't realize there was one, I don't know.
And it was a young parrot. It cried a couple of times, but didn't quite get things right. So this year. They were able to pull it off.
Is that like a whooping crane?
Uh, it's it's a very large raptor bird that that feeds mostly on fish.
Oh.
So if you have an opportunity to watch it among our sites, and there are several sites, I'll actually pull fish right out of the water. Pretty cool, and it's like, oh.
Almost like a hawk.
Because a whooping crane, so they make a huge nest.
Uh, they're usually on the ground.
There's stuff in the woods back by us and it's bad mud rolls. It's huge.
That's what's cool about the pictures. You can see the fish. And that's in part, um, the water quality and some of the stream conditions can work, and that's the happens within that person. Um, they they hunt by sight, but when you have very good water.
Does that be a rookery he's talking about?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Yeah, there must be great critters.
And they all kind of dirty together, right?
Yeah, great blue heron.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment? It's Kelly. I just wanted to let you know, so you guys will talk about that twenty fifty plan. You can go on, anybody can go on the county board, the county website and give input onto what they want in that plan. There's a survey. Um, there's even a map where you can write things down on what you want. So I encourage everybody to do that, especially our end biking and and hiking. Um, and also I wanted to let you know, I got that, um, I got that report that Kevin Bussow gave the presentation, and I forwarded it to a few of you, so it can be disseminated from the rest of you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Well, okay, then, um, trustee reports on conferences, conferences and committee and meetings attended. Um, I don't know that we have anything specific to say. Uh, public comments? Any public comments out there?
Um, no hand, no hands are up, nope.
Okay. I want to thank you all for, uh, your attendance and participation. I think we had a very good meeting and a discussion on a wide range of issues when we're moving forward. So we'll make a motion to adjourn. So, in a second. Pass seconds, okay.
Trustee Zimmerman?
Yes.
Trustee Everard?
Yes.
Vice President Adam?
Yeah.
President Brits?
Yeah.
Trustee Gayton?
Yeah.
President Nico?
Yes. Thank you.